Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30. And if you would all please take your seats. Thank you. I will now call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Welcome, everyone. It's always good to see people in the chambers, and everyone is welcome. Members of the public may also choose to watch us on television or on burnsvillemn.gov/meetings. You can also go to Comcast, Channel 16, or 859 to be with this meeting. And the public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meetings webpage and in the council agenda packet. The next item on the agenda is announcements, and tonight is a celebratory night for us here in Burnsville. But I have announcements and one proclamation, and then the awards. Announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Monday, November 3rd at 5:30 p.m. Now, usually, all of our meetings are on Tuesday. However, it's going to be held on Monday, November 3rd because Tuesday, the 4th, is an election day, and we're not allowed to hold meetings during elections. The next regular council meeting is Tuesday, November 18th at 5:30 p.m. We have a work session that's scheduled for Monday, November 10th at 5:30 p.m., and that is Veterans Day. And we have a special work session for our quarterly roundtable, and that's scheduled for Monday, November 3rd at 5:45 p.m., and that will be in the Dakota B conference room. All meetings of the city council are held here in the chambers unless I announce a different location, for instance, like the quarterly roundtable that will be in Dakota B, and that's downstairs. So, the proclamation for today is Make a Difference Day. Whereas volunteer service is an investment in our future, bridging the difference that divide people by working together to solve serious social problems. And whereas the annual observance of Make a Difference Day encourages people to improve the lives of their fellow human beings by giving where there is a need, rebuilding what has been torn down, teaching where there is a desire to learn, and inspiring those who have lost hope. And whereas Burnsville is fortunate to have many caring residents who are willing to donate their valuable time, energy, and talent to making a difference in the lives of others through volunteerism. And whereas, at this time, we'd like to recognize and thank our many community partners for their valuable contributions throughout the year, including Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, Burnsville Athletic Club, Burnsville Community Foundation, Burnsville Historic Society, the Burnsville Festival and Fire muster, Heart of the City Race Committee, the Hockey Club, the International Festival Board, the Lions Club of Burnsville and Savage, the Minnesota Valley Figure Skating Club, Backboard Rotary Clubs in Burnsville, both the morning and the noon Rotary Clubs, the Senior Center Advisory Council, the Softball Council, the Sweet Sue Garden Club, and many more. See, in Burnsville, it is all about us coming together for our community because we love this place we call home. So now, therefore, I, Elizabeth Kouts, Mayor, on behalf of myself and the city council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, October 25th, 2025, to be Make a Difference Day in Burnsville, and urge my fellow residents to observe this day by connecting with friends, relatives, and with religious school and civic groups to engage in projects that make a positive difference in our community, proclaim this 21st day of October, 2025. And now, I'm going to go to that side to make the awards for all of our wonderful community builders who are here this evening to be recognized. And if the council can join me, please, and we will do that. And our city manager. So I have been asked many times out in front why we're wearing what we're wearing. We are all here supporting our police department. The month of October, they are all wearing their pink patches because they are because they are all raising money for breast cancer research, and we're supporting the work that they're doing. So, thank you very much to our police department for the work that they do to help with breast cancer research. And so, wearing what we're wearing is in support of the work that they're doing. And so, here in they do great things. They're not, they take care of the community, they keep us safe, and they're also raising money for breast cancer research. So, welcome to our Burnsville community. This is our annual Community Builders Awards recognition, and it's also the time when we pin those being recognized with a Star Thrower Award for Making a Difference, and I'll say more about that later. This is one of our favorite events of the year as we get to recognize special people in our community who make our city such a vibrant place to live and a welcoming city to call home. And thank you to all of you for joining us here tonight to celebrate these wonderful folks that make a big difference in our community. Each year, we do this, and it's been over 20 years that we've been doing this and recognizing our wonderful community members. I am amazed at the variety of ways our community members step up, help out, and make this community the remarkable place that we are all so proud to call home. To those we will recognize tonight, your time, your talent, and passion for the community make us all better. On behalf of myself, the city council, and our staff here at the city of Burnsville, I am pleased to present our Community Builders Award, and also to pin those who are community builders with the Star Throwers pin. So let me tell you the story about the Star Thrower. So there's a story by Lauren Isley that goes this way. There's a gentleman who takes a walk along the beach every morning, and one morning, as he went down to take his walk along the beach, he saw that the beach was just littered with starfish and out in the distance, so someone who appeared to be dancing. So he kept walking, and as he came up to this individual, he said, "What are you doing?" The young woman went over to her gunny sack and pulled out a starfish and threw it into the ocean. And he said, "You can't possibly make a difference. The sun is coming up, and the beach is littered with starfish." She went over and picked up another starfish from her gunny sack and threw it into the ocean and said it made a difference to that one. You see, ladies and gentlemen, we make a difference in the lives of the people in our community and around us through all manner of ways. A smile, you could make a difference to someone's life because you don't know what they're dealing with. But a smile can make that person's day a remarkable day. Just being here and doing what you do for one another says that we care, and we practice kindness and compassion here in Burnsville. So first, I'd like to ask that the winners to please come to the presentation area when your name is called to receive your award and take a photo. And second, after the final award is presented, I'd like to invite all of the winners to come back to the front for a group photo. And we have our photographer ready to do all of that, and so I'm also going to say, if you want to cheer for the recipients, please do, because that adds to the spirit of what we're here to do, is recognizing the great things that we do for one another. So, the first award this evening, and who's going to be, you're going to help pin? Councilmember Schultz is going to help pin, and everybody's going to come. So the first award goes to Allison Enamagua. So, Allison was nominated by Emma Cook. Emma? There's Emma Cook. Allison actively engages with her community through service initiatives, assisting teachers and mentoring students at the local elementary school. Her nominator, Emma, who met Allison during their freshman year, describes her as a shining light. So thank you, Allison, for brightening our community and supporting the growth and enrichment of our students. Thank you so much. So Allison, I understand that one of your teachers was a little tough with you. But look at you now. So, we're so happy that you have brightened the lives of others, and you're continuing to thrive.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. Okay. One of these wonderful gentlemen will be in charge of the boxes.
It's a team effort.
It's a team effort. The next award goes to the Breakfast Rotary, and tonight it's being represented by Rotary President Gregory Ludwigson and Judge David Knutson. So the Burnsville Rotary Club, nominated by Lisa Engelken with DARTS, has long demonstrated service above self. Their partnership with DARTS helps older adults stay in the home and communities they love, providing vital support through outdoor chores assistance, and tonight, we especially honor their dedication to this work.
Thank you.
And at one time, I was a proud Rotarian for the breakfast and the noon club. Now I'm a liar.
Now you're a liar.
You wanted to hear that, right? Let's check.
Do you mind?
Let me get over here.
There's more delicate.
Yeah.
How too often we get to honor a judge within work?
Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next recipient is Carlos Lopez, International Festival of Burnsville. Carlos was nominated by our International Festival of Burnsville Chair Amber Cameron Carlos was part of the original group that envisioned the International Festival of Burnsville nearly 20 years ago and has supported it ever since as a co-chair, a fundraising and longtime emcee. His energy and dedication have helped make the festival a vibrant community event, even to today. So, thank you, Carlos.
Thank you so much. Relax, we like to hug everybody.
Yeah. It's kind of a thing. Okay, no, stay here. Picture, picture, picture.
All right. Here we go.
Ready, one, two, three. One, two.
Thank you, sir.
Our next recipient is Jason Low, Burnsville Festival and Fire Muster, nominated by Skip Jason has served as operations co-chair for the Burnsville Fire Festival and Fire Muster for the past three years, leading logistics and ensuring a smooth experience for up to 15,000 attendees. His dedication and leadership were recognized this year with his appointment to the festival board. Jason has also participated in the Burnsville Fire Ops 101 class, gaining firsthand insight into the work of our firefighter paramedics, further showing his commitment to serving and understanding the community. So thank you, Jason, for your work on the Burnsville Festival and Fire Muster and for your commitment to our community.
Just that way. There you go. One, two, three. Thank you.
The next recipient is Julie West, Kids and Kinship. Julie was nominated by Kids and Kinship for her incredible dedication to youth in our community. She volunteers as a mentor to Allison, celebrating a one-year match anniversary this past January. Jared Peterson, program coordinator, says Julie's warm personality and commitment to bettering Burnsville through her community involvement and direct volunteerism make her so deserving of this award. So thank you, Julie, for making a difference in the lives of our youth. So Julie, is that the Allison that is your mentee?
It is. She's a star.
And here you are, both of you.
I know, isn't that great?
I know, yes.
You two can make the difference in youth. We are looking for lots more volunteers. I was just told that they had, are looking to close the window, or the list for kids to sign up because they don't have enough volunteers. So if you have a heart for children, that's a place to be.
You made a pitch.
That's my job, right?
Yeah.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
This next recipient is Kristi Peterson, and she truly is a star. the Burnsville Police and Fire Foundation Golf Tournament, nominated by Skip Neenhouse. From the beginning, Julie has led our fundraising initiatives for the Police and Fire Foundation, and has been extremely successful. So Kristi, the golf, the fire, Police and Fire Foundation Golf Tournament, for the past two years, and coordinating a full day of golf recognition and community support. And under her leadership, the event has raised nearly $500,000 to help provide Burnsville's first responders with resources not covered by their yearly budget. So thank you, Kristi, for all of the work that you're doing. It's so wonderful to work with you. Yeah. You are a star. Okay.
Is it the Marines really passionate?
It's every service on the side.
Do you want to do a picture first?
Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three.
The next recipient is Michael McGowan, Freeway Transfer Station, and nominated by Carl For decades, Michael has been described as a community builder, creating businesses that serve both Burnsville and beyond. From the Freeway Transfer Station, which keeps items out of the landfill, to a driving range that brings joy to local golfers, his contributions have had a lasting impact. His nominator, Carl, states that Michael has been a valued member of the community for years, and we are pleased to present this award tonight.
I will say Shelley Golf also donated to Burnsville Travel Baseball this year.
Oh, okay.
Nine double A. All right, one, two, three.
The next award goes to Paul Otten, with Legal Assistance of Dakota County, nominated by Anne Clifford. So Paul dedicates his time and legal skills to Legal Assistance of Dakota County, offering thoughtful guidance to individuals facing difficult consumer issues. His consistent support, compassion, and willingness to step in wherever needed make a meaningful impact on both the organization and our community. So Paul, we are very grateful for the impact you have made to the organization and to our community. Thank you very much.
One, two, three.
And the next award goes to Sean Najman, nominated by her spouse Tammy Najman. Sean has lived in Burnsville for 16 years and founded his own graphics company eight years ago. He supports local businesses, schools, and community events using his creativity and passion to promote inclusion and highlight the best of Burnsville. Thank you, Sean, for your dedication to our community. We appreciate you. And the next and last award goes to Tone Waters with You Advocates. Amy Tone met her while they were volunteering at Gideon Pond Elementary. Tone is a founding member of With You Advocates, supporting families of children with special needs, and helped establish our church and a monthly book club for local moms. She is actively engaged in ISD 191 as a substitute teacher, volunteer, and PTO president at Gideon Pond Elementary. So thank you, Tone, for everything that you do for our community. So, one recipient is not here with us, and she requested that her award be mailed to her. She is Officer Mariah Letta, a community policing individual in South St. Paul. And the person who nominated her is from South St. Paul, and she works in South St. Paul. And so, but so, we will mail her award to her. And so, if all the recipients can please come forward, and we'll take a group picture.
So you have your, everybody have your awards.
There's some hype in this group.
Okay. Let's see, do we have everyone?
If we can squeeze together, that's great.
Your fish eye.
You want to come over on this side?
I can, sure. Balance it off a little bit.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. I'm gonna take one more. Let me take one more. Ready? One, two, three.
Okay, thank you. And this is the opportunity for anyone that would like to address the council on an item that is not in a printed agenda, not in application form, that will be coming before us at a future date. And I know that there is one individual who wishes to address the council, who is in the audience, Mr. Bruce Henry. Is Mr. Henry, yes, Mr. Henry?
Is this on?
It should be. And then if you can give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Bruce Henry. I reside at 12575 Pleasant Avenue, Apartment 304, and that is a real-life cooperative of Burnsville. And I currently serve as the incoming board president. And I wanted to speak to the council. First of all, I wanted to congratulate you guys on starting the trail. It's been a three-and-a-half-year project. It's working great. It, I would like to invite all the city council, come and view it. You got, there's a couple of things we would like to know when the fencing comes up and the lighting, because we would like to use the same manufacturer for fencing that you guys did. I checked on that. What I really came to speak about is about the special assessment. I know you guys had your public hearing in May, and unfortunately, most of us who currently serve on the board thought it wasn't a good time to speak to that. But we're not pleased with the special assessment, and we don't benefit from it. And what I really wanted to read, and I have some background material that was sent through our finance chair, who's currently also on our board, and it was said in regards to new buildings being added, and this was Molly Stone that answered this and said, "This will spread the assessment to new properties and will therefore lower the assessment for existing properties." And I looked in our documents, and we went from 2,719 to 2,920 to 3,072. I don't call that a lowering of the assessment. Now, I don't know if you guys have assessed the new properties or not. That's what I would like to get an answer, and I'd also like to find out since we're 119 people own the property that we live on, I'm not an owner, he's in the same situation, whether 119 of us would have to fill out a form to dispute the assessment, or could we do it as a joint effort of the board of directors?
That I am going to have you speak to our city manager and our team, and they can help you understand how all of that transpired. Because it has been a long process that has been going on, and our attorney has also been a part of that with regard to your attorney. So we're going to let our city manager and our team have that conversation with you, since it already has been done.
Yeah, the only reason I, I'm one of these people, I was elected in 2017 in a state in Nevada for the first time to a town board. So I understand what you guys do. But I also understand after I rotated off of that, I was able to accomplish with some citizens and getting things changed. So I know that one person can't make a difference, but one person can make a difference in one cooperative. And I speak, I think, for most of the senior citizens there, and I would like you guys, if you want to come and look at our property and just analyze whether or not we actually benefit from this assessment. I think you would have a different point of view if you looked at it from the people who live there. And I really want to thank you guys for letting me speak here for two or three minutes. Thank you. Because normally I get in front of a mic, and you can't shut me up.
Well, thank you for coming in, and you did have two residents who spoke in favor of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Mrs. Collins, anyone online?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on. The next item is additions to the final agenda, and this is for emergency items only. City Manager Lindberg, are there any emergency items to come before the body?
Nothing from staff.
Members of the council? Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on a consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Mrs. Collins, anyone online?
No one online.
Mr. Lindberg, the staff wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Not from staff.
Members of the council?
Nope.
May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
Approved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you. The next item is on the regular agenda, and this is a public hearing, and this is to approve a reseller's license for Premier Gold, Silver, and Coin Association, LLC. Presenting this evening is our deputy city clerk, Mrs. Erica Henderson. Mrs. Henderson?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So Premier Gold, Silver, and Coin Association, they are a national precious metal and collectible firm based out of Ottawa, Ohio. The company specializes in hosting in-person buying events, so road shows is another name for it, and they travel the U.S. hosting these road shows. They have proposed to come to the city of Burnsville over at the Wyndham Hotel, November 18th through the 20th, excuse me, through the 22nd, and the operating hours would be from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The company has submitted a reseller's license application. They have acknowledged and agreed to comply with all city code regulations and requirements, and they have registered with LEEDs online. The Burnsville Police Department has conducted a background check, and nothing was found. And as required by city code, a public hearing is, must be held for all new reseller licenses. And I can stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Henderson? Yes, Councilmember Keeley.
Not a question, just a comment, Madam Mayor. Being familiar with this industry, I want to compliment this company for coming forward. There are a lot of these types of operations that don't come to city councils. They come in, they operate in a hotel for three or four days, and they leave, and they don't report anything. I'm very respectful of a company that comes forward and follows the rules like everybody else in this business does. Thank you.
Councilmember Gustafson?
So is this just for that period of time, or this be year-long so they could do other events in the city, should they want to do that?
Yes, they will be licensed through the whole year with the expiration date of June 30th.
Yeah, I also like the fact that they also opted onto the resellers.
LEEDs online requirement.
Yeah, LEEDs online. So I thought that was for something that they're doing, and they're just, I think, very good ethics. Yeah. Anything else from Mrs. Henderson? With that, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Mrs. Collins, anyone online?
One online, no.
Okay, members of the council, I will now close the public hearing. Your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item is a continuation of MSP Burnsville LLC's request for a plan unit development amendment and a conditional use permit to allow for a long-term care facility at 14400 Nicollet Court. We're asked to adopt the ordinance, and the findings are fact. Presenting this evening is our planning manager, Mr. Mike Marosa. Mr. Marosa, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as the mayor just mentioned, this is the continuance of MSP Burnsville LLC's request for a plan unit development amendment, a conditional use permit for, to allow for a long-term care facility at 14400 Nicollet Court. So background, this item was tabled at the September 16th city council meeting to allow staff and the applicant to address some outstanding items as directed by council, and since that time, we have made progress, and we're back before you tonight. So since then too, it's worth noting that the applicant has submitted a 40-day extension. At the last meeting, the 120-day approval clock wore out, or expired, I should say, on October 8th. So we had, the applicant agreed to extend the application voluntarily past that 120 days, which they did, additional 40 days or until November 17th, 2025. So with that, outstanding direction from the council was, there's four items. The first one was, the applicant shall contact and discuss the proposed use with Hickam Academy located at 14300 Nicollet Court. The second item was to add a condition to ensure review of the conditional use permit if the subject property is ever sold. The third one is the applicant shall review their operation plan to see if they can reduce the number of beds. And four, the applicant shall add a condition, oh, add a condition that establishes a scaling model for staffing levels and client capacity upon initial startup and the months following. Since then, the applicant has made progress in all three of those, and staff, and the applicant, and the city attorney have drafted the conditions at the direction of the council. So the first one we'll talk about is public outreach. The applicant has met with Hickam Academy, and they have provided a letter of support, which was included within your packets tonight. The second one, a condition was added to state that a conditional use permit shall be recorded with a chain of title for the subject property and shall be incorporated into any lease agreement associated with the use. This ensures that any new party that purchased the property is aware of the lease agreement or is aware of the conditional use permit, and it will be included in any kind of, incorporated into any kind of lease agreement of a future tenant of the facility, if approved. Condition four, the maximum number of clients allowed to be served on site shall be limited to 134. This is a reduction from 149 previously. The applicant thinks that total build-out, the number would be probably closer to 120, but they want to have a little flexibility for client intake and clients leaving the facility, so they have to have that 134 capacity. Condition 15, this is the scaling plan. The selected operator shall submit a detailed operations plan that includes a startup plan establishing a clear scaling model for staffing levels and client capacity during the first year of operation. The operation plan shall be implemented as approved and will be subject to ongoing monitoring by city staff to ensure compliance with this condition. The applicant did provide an example of a scaling plan as part of their, rinse and middle within your packets. Again, once an operator is selected, we will take, we want them to provide one, not just the applicant or the applicant in front of us tonight. We want to see the actual operator provide a scaling plan so we can ensure that it meets the intent of what is in front of you tonight. One other item that was brought up at the previous council meeting was about loitering and people maybe smoking on site. That is something we've had discussions with, a lot with the applicant. And so as part of your packet, there's been, there's an area identified where a smoking area would be and some outdoor space that would be improved as part of an application in the future. Originally meaning to include that as a condition, as we knew that was something that we were cognizant of, but it is included in the letter where they propose to put that in the future. With that, there is two options, action options for the council. One is approve the application with the reviews, the revised conditions of approval as recommended by city staff. Second is to table the application to a future meeting for the city attorney to prepare finds a fact for denial based on the fact that the use is inconsistent with the existing PUD. And I guess there is a third option, which is on the screen, is to table it to add additional conditions or to have additional discussion at a future meeting. However, we only have one more meeting after this, otherwise applicant won't have to voluntarily extend the application again. And with that, the applicant is present for any questions, and myself.
Okay, Councilmember Keeley.
That button is from, you could, that's from the previous.
Oh, that was from the previous?
Yeah. But I'll have some questions when the time comes.
Well, thank you. And with that, Mr. Marosa, just stay there, and if, Mrs. Rogers?
Welcome again, and thank you so much for all of your great work in addressing all of the concerns that were raised at the last meeting by members of the council and myself. And I read through your letter, and all of the, you've addressed all of the conditions. And so, and some new conditions with regard to the scaling plan and the number of clients, and you reduced that from 149 to 134. Really appreciate it that you also addressed all of the issues that you all have talked about with regard to the operations in Eden Prairie, Wayzetta, Bloomington, and I think the other one was Woodbury? No?
Yes, correct.
Yes. And so, and they were all in your letter, so I thank you for all of that. So, and you have also put in place, and I know that this was something that Councilmember Schultz was interested in, is the 12-month scaling plan, and you have that there. So my question to you, with all that you have addressed, and to Mr. Marosa, so will all of this be part of the condition? Will this be added to the conditions that we have now there so that now it's going to be over 30 conditions that you will be held to?
Madam Mayor, members of council, that is correct. These are, these additional conditions, we believe, are reflective of the concerns that we heard at the prior council meeting, and we hope that they address those concerns. And again, our letter provides some supplemental data to further support why we believe these operational protocols are important for the site and to retain that best-in-class facility, and that any tenant in the site would be required to follow.
Yeah, thank you, because even with the exterior outdoor space management, you also had a photograph of where that's going to be located and all of that. So I really appreciate that. So my question is, with all of these new conditions that was in your letter, will that be wrapped into the findings of fact as well, Mr. Marosa?
Yes, I'm going to actually defer to City Attorney Jared Shepherd on that one. He has some nice language drafted to address that.
Because these are new finding, new conditions, that when I went through the findings of fact, were not included in the findings because they were, these are new, so.
Yeah, there's a few that are new, and there's a few that are just a little more granular than the ones drafted by staff. And so if we get to that point, I have some language which would include the language that's to approve the PUD and CUP, adopt the findings of fact and ordinance, with the inclusion of all the more restrictive conditions listed in the October 16th letter of Larkin-Hoffman.
Because what I do appreciate is that it's in the conditions now with regard to the land use and how that's going to, that it's a chain of.
Yes, absolutely, that this will be recorded against the property, that it will be required to be a part of any lease, and that any property owner will have immediate, immediate notice of these requirements. What I would also suggest to the council, Madam Mayor, is that, you know, we conducted some outreach as well in terms of the surrounding medical community and impacts upon their overall usage and how our facility would fit in with their existing operations. And there are a list on page three of that letter that suggests some of the other operational protocols that are, that are already contemplated within our conversations with your staff, but that we are very much, we intend to comply with, and your staff would intend to extract from us in our permitting process, but that we absolutely would be open to rolling in a specific conditions of approval as well.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate it because, Mr. Marosa and Mrs. Rogers, you had everything that has to say that before a permit was done. you had everything that has to say that before a permit was done, these things had to be done within the conditions. So I appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that the condition that has to do with with the chain of title of the subject property that also is incorporated into the lease agreement that's going to be associated with an operator. So, and I really appreciate that. That's important for the community. Okay, members of the council, thoughts, questions? Councilmember Keely.
Well, to the applicant, this has been a long road. That's probably the longest list of conditions that I've witnessed on a particular application. And so whereas I recognize there's significant give in this process, the capacity at even reduced a little bit to 134 is still where I have a major problem. And it's, it's still going to be one of the largest in the state, and it, I have no problem with the use and the need. It's, it's truly just, I don't know that we in Burnsville, certainly from my perspective, want to be saying that we have the largest, if not one of the largest, facilities in the state. I don't know that that's a burden that any second-tier suburb has to bear. I get that it's a big building and it's already got the rooms, and so there's capacity. So why not utilize the best of that capacity? It's the most dollars and cents. Good decision, but I don't think that's the right decision for our city. So my question to you is, would you consider sub 100 in capacity?
So one of the issues that we struggle with, and we ran some numbers just in terms of the amount of staffing that we're proposing for this site. And what I'll transparently share with you, and I think it's pretty clear from our overall scaling plans, is that in order to have the number of licensed drug and alcohol counselors, medical treatment providers, and licensed nurses employed at this facility, to have that level of care, which is a higher level of care and a standard that we're coming up to in conjunction with those other conditions of approval, our numbers cannot really drop below 120. And so, you know, we're suggesting the 134 so that there can be some flexibility. We don't ever want to run into a position where we're not in compliance with our conditional use permit. And as, you know, as clients transition in and out of the facility, we could, 120 would be operationally the three floors. And this would, and that would allow, you know, if we had some excess capacity or we had someone moving in and moving out on the same day, we wouldn't run into conflict. But I'll transparently say that 120 is the number that we believe is able to fully staff this with those supplemental protocols that are going to create some of the reductions that we've proposed in terms of medical usage on the site.
That sounds like a no.
So I unfortunately think it sounds like a no, but I think it's a no for a good reason. And it's a no for a good reason because you have additional staffing that are trained staff. And I think that that has real value in terms of providing excellence of care.
In the presentations in the past, there was a citing that there's a lot of other treatment facilities like this particular business model, but they are much smaller. There was a note that some of the smallest had been going out of business. Has the source of funding to support those clinics changed since they, some had to make the choice to go out of business?
Yes, that's true. So the source of funding, so the legislature in the last session specifically provided supplemental funding for these two care models, the 3.1 and the 3.5 levels. Now, for smaller providers to be able to sort of weather the storm, and we have multiple mechanisms of payment at this site as well. We have private pay as well as public care and publicly funded pay. Those rates at the 3.1 and the 3.5 levels have been increased by the legislature, really in response to the closure of those smaller facilities. And the growing reality that many local governments are uncomfortable with smaller facilities that are located within residential neighborhoods. And so transitioning to a more institutional model that looks like this facility is something that has some policy support alongside financial support at the legislative level.
So could the model survive at 100 or 90 capacity? Let's say maybe a capacity of 100, but on rotation, it ends up being about 90 with the new funding model?
So with the new funding models, again, with our supplemental staffing, we're at 120 is the number that remains, you know, functioning. Now, certainly, we can go back and do some additional research, and we could modify some of our staffing requirements to take a look at that. And I'd be happy to bring that data back to you. But at this, but based upon the work that we did to reduce those levels, we did look at this. And again, do not want to lose that higher level of care. And that higher level of care is really funded through capacity here.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
I do appreciate all the work that you have done on this. And as my colleague notes, we have never seen this many restrictions placed on an applicant. And you have worked very hard to meet every one of our questions or challenges on this plan. This type of facility is needed. And communities can keep saying, "Not in my backyard." Or communities can say, "I value health care." And addiction is a chronic health issue. This is not a moral failing. That's really what we're looking at on this. And I do believe, since we are already a regional medical area, this is just another thing that complements that regional medical area that we have. And this is just another type of treatment for a chronic health condition. And I don't believe we would be having this type or this lengthy of a discussion if it was something that was treating a chronic condition like diabetes or any number of issues that we could say, "Just don't be fat and don't eat sugar and you won't have diabetes," right? We could say that. Or we could realize that it's a health issue and that it needs to be taken care of. I do appreciate the high level of staffing that you're doing. You're not looking at warehousing people. The reason why you're trying to balance the number of beds is because you're trying to give a level of care that is not seen in other facilities. And I've been looking at other facilities, especially the smaller ones, and that level of care is not there. So you're not looking at warehousing, and I appreciate that. And I greatly support that. And I would also like our residents to feel that they can enter treatment, they can detox somewhere else with the assurance of knowing that they can come back to Burnsville to complete this near their family, near their jobs, near their support systems. And this could help us to encourage more people to have their chronic health condition treated. So this is something I support, and I really appreciate all the work that you have done on this.
Okay, councilmember Workman.
Thank you. And I appreciate councilmember Schultz's perspective on this. But I'm in agreement with councilmember Keely that this is inconsistent with the existing PUD. This is a very intense use for this corridor. We're in the midst of trying to redevelop this corridor with various different uses, and our public safety is already stretched thin despite the massive hiring that we just got done doing. So I am not in favor of this application as it's written, even with the conditions. So I would be opting for option number two this evening.
And option number two is?
Keely.
Table the application to a future meeting for city attorney to prepare findings of fact for denial based on the fact that the use is inconsistent with the existing PUD.
Okay, councilmember Gustafson.
I too appreciate all the work you've done on this. A lot of questions came up on having a treatment center there. It's something I believe we need. It's something the county definitely needs. We'd be the first one in the county to be that way. It's, I agree with councilmember Schultz in the sense, this is a disease, and these are some people that are, some of them are at the lowest point of their life, and they need help. And to be able to provide a place for that, I think is very important for them to put their lives back together again, for them to get their families back together again, just to have a job again. I think we could be very proud of having a good quality facility in the city. And I also agree, we are a medical center here in Burnsville. I mean, our campus is growing all the time. I'm not going to get into your business plan. If it takes 120 or 134 to make it work, then that's what it takes to make it work. As a hotel, 79 rooms, if that thing's full, there's 148 people in there anyways. I mean, that's just the way that works, and those people are coming and going all the time. I know enough about treatment centers that people aren't just coming and going at will all the time, in and out of there. So I would be in support of this going forward, just so you know.
I appreciate all the work that has been done. And we talk about mental health here in our community and in our city. And we know what it is. And what this is, this facility will be doing is to help those folks with mental health issues. As councilmember Schultz spoke to, is that there is a need. Because if this was about heart, cancer, or diabetes, we wouldn't be doing this. But it's about people who are looking for treatment so that they can recover and become healthy again, and to be engaged members of society and to give back. I have seen people who are now sober 20 years simply because there was a facility that they could go to and are now people who give so much to the community and are great human beings. And so I'm in support. You have brought to the table conditions that you have put on yourselves to make sure that you met the needs of our fire and you met the needs of our police. And also in your staffing plan, you have put in place the ability that they needed to have connections with the medical community here in Burnsville. So I appreciate that. And the nice thing about all of this is that there will be reports to our staff on what's going on. So in reading all of that, you have gone far and beyond to make sure that the community is safe and the community's concerns and our concerns are addressed. You've addressed the public safety service aspects of all of this. And so from my perspective, if we truly say that we care about the mental health of our community and the people here, then this is a facility that's going to help restore people to good mental health and that to restore them to being people who will be healthy and good citizens to the community. So I'm in support. You have done a lot of work. The only thing that I would like to see is that, how that, I'll leave it to our attorney and to you and our staff, how that will be rolled into a, into the findings of fact and anything else that needs to be done. Do you have some words that you would want for the motion to be?
Yes, Mayor. You ready for that now?
Well, I can, you need to do that so that I can take a vote, right?
Yep. So if we had a motion to approve the PUD and CUP and adopt the findings of fact and ordinance with inclusion of all the more restrictive conditions from the October 16th, 2025 letter from Larkin-Hoffman, that'll get it done.
I motion what our city attorney just said in exactly that language.
Okay.
And I will second that.
There's a motion and a second.
Going to repeat that.
Is there further discussion? And I think for this one, I will ask for a roll call. So, city clerk Collins?
Councilmember Keely.
No.
Councilmember Gustafson?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Workman?
No.
Mayor Kautz?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. We very much appreciate your time and look forward to bringing a first-in-class facility to the city. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm assured with everything that's going on and how you have worked with our staff that this is going to move forward and we will have a good outcome.
Absolutely, otherwise your city attorney will just revoke the CUP. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now I will recess the Burnsville City Council meeting so the Economic Development Authority meeting can convene. President?
Shad.
Gustafson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. I call the Economic Development Authority meeting to order. The clerk will note that all commissioners are present. Move on to item one. Are there any additions to the final agenda? Seeing none, I will move on. Item number two is the consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes and approve a corrective quick claim deed for 3150 West Park Drive. Is there anyone who wishes an item to be removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and vote? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kautz.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Keely. You got ahead of her. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Item number three is the regular agenda. There are no items. There is no other business. May I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Motion by Commissioner Keely.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schultz. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And I now reconvene the Burnsville City Council meeting. And members of the council, there are no other items to come before us this evening, and a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. Good night, and thank you for being with us.